Okay. Hi, welcome to today's Better Minneapolis podcast. Today I'm here with Jim Meyer. He's running for city council in Ward 11. Hello.
Hi, glad to be here.
Good, so why don't we begin? Just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay, well, I know I'm maybe one of the older candidates in all of the ward races. I'm gonna be sixty-three very soon. Longtime resident of Minneapolis. Grew up, really happy childhood on Fifty First and Chicago, played out of Pearl Park, and went to all the public schools, Hail. I was part of the city's first, one of the city's first racial equity experiments with the Hail Field School pairing. And I was in the youngest grade for, I was in fourth grade, the youngest grade at Field when I was sort of reordered over to Field from Hail School. And I lived so close to Field, they weren't even gonna send buses, even though it was a busing integration program, they were not even gonna send buses to my house. And parents on the block said, "You have to be kidding me that you are going to bus our kids out of Hail but not bus them." So, but then when spring came of that year, if our bus was ever late, we just walked home. You know, it's like no big, so it was really interesting that something that seemed like culturally on the other side of the moon was just not, but it was across the creek. And that was, you know, years later, I was going like, wow, you know, redlining or natural boundary or some segregation was going on, because why would, why would that seem?
So, so it sounds like you've been in the city a long time, in Ward 11 in particular, for a long time, right?
Yes, I did live a few, I rented apartments in Stevens Square, right near Stevens Square Park, on my own a couple of times. But I really was pretty slow out of the house. It was a side by, a one-level double bungalow. So during my freelance writing career, which I'll get to, I rented from the folks, kind of overlooked them, helped them on the house, and had pretty affordable rent, so I could survive on my freelance writing. And I did leave, I left, I got married in my early forties in two thousand four. We moved to Farmington to take care of some in-laws out there for about ten years. Then I moved back to the childhood home, purchased that from siblings, and moved back into the childhood home, took care of my mom, and now we're living there. So I've spent a lot of time on Chicago Avenue, I know it well, but I really had fun after finishing school. I'll tell you, I also finished the Minneapolis Public Schools, and I was blessed to make it into the radio broadcasting program, KBEM FM, and made some lifelong friends there. And the radio station would broadcast city council meetings back when they were on Fridays. Every other Friday, the full meeting of the council was broadcast. Lyle Schwarzkopf, who I came to know later in life, was the city clerk, and his voice is kind of in my head, him calling the role, you know, Councilmember Schulstedt, Councilmember Dietzick, President Rainville, I'm talking about.
So that tradition is still ongoing, it's just now on YouTube, and I think the City Council has its own channel.
Right, a funny thing, I remember this too. Sometimes, a couple of days after the Friday meeting, Walt Dietzick would come back in to want to hear a private replay of something that was said at the reading, and he'd flag it, and so that just stuck in my memory. So I've had that, kind of this allure or respect for the city council, even as a youngster, it's had a certain glamour for me. I never thought I'd be on it, but it has held a fascination, even though I haven't, I haven't studied it as closely in as long as I wish I had now, but it's always kind of fascinated me, so here we are.
So, bringing us to now, like, what motivated you to run? It seems like you got into the race a little bit late. You came in after the DFL convention, but you're still DFL, is what I understand, correct?
Well, technically, I'm running as an independent.
Okay, oh, and what's, what's the line gonna be?
Yes, this has always interested me. I've put a lot of thought into, you are allowed a three-word principle in which you can't use a party if you're not going to be in that party. I selected budgetary economic stability.
Okay.
And there was a clever little hook in that it's like B-E-S and then a T in stability, best, Jim Meyer is best for Ward 11. I didn't really, that might have been too clever for such a short campaign. That might have been a little bit too clever of a message. But yeah, it's always a challenge, what can you say in three words that really nails it? And I have a feel, you know, having done it now, I don't know if that's absolutely so powerful, like, well, stability, does that mean you're gonna raise the budget or cut it, or what do you really mean by that? But what I did mean was that I thought we had to bring the budget under some control. The property taxes are just rising and rising, and I didn't see any restraint down at City Hall about streamlining the city or cutting back any non-essential service. And I feel like the council, I've said this on videos, the council has seemed kind of business hostile when we need the revenue to mitigate, to mitigate the property tax burden due to the loss downtown. I think you've made this point in some of your essays, too. So I wanted budgetary restraint, economic growth, and I thought we'd be fine. We, we just really have to turn around the imbalance that I see there, or we're gonna be in real trouble, especially facing a possible recession, automation job loss. I think we can't count on the same state and federal support we've had. So I'm just not seeing quite, maybe I'm beginning to feel a little bit of sense of urgency downtown, but not nearly as much, especially on the business growth side. That just seems like, oh, it's, it's no problem, we'll just raise the taxes, or we'll find another tax bracket. And I just read an article today that Boston or Massachusetts has succeeded with a millionaire tier. It's raised a lot, but that isn't going to, I don't think it's gonna address the real long-term fundamental problem that we've got to, this was a powerhouse city once upon a time. What has happened? And I don't wanna, you know, I haven't even watched Precarious State, the whole thing yet. I feel like I have, because I've seen so many excerpts or heard so much talk, but I don't think they're totally off-base with the, and I wish they hadn't made it maybe quite so red meat. I wish it just stuck to the facts. And I, I think Rick, the producer of it now, is out there saying, you know, don't worry about, don't worry about behind the scenes, let's, let's deal with the upfront. What's, what's really going on? You debate my facts, but not my process, so.
So let's circle back here. You got into the race, if I'm understanding correctly, like, maybe the main motivation is that you felt a candidate was needed to be in the race that was more focused on the budget and economic development? Is that kind of what motivated you, or am I misreading it?
I would say the main, the main reason was, and I know it was risky, like, a long odds to ju, to file in August. I mean, I had contemplated it all, you know, spring and summer. I knew DFL convention wasn't for me, it wasn't a good time of the year, and I, I just, I just didn't feel like I had a chance at DFL convention. And I'm sorry to say, well, eventually I'll get to the point of how hard it is to run a campaign anymore. You know, it is, it's a high entry point, which is discouraging. You know, we're all talking about democracy and the breakdown of democracy and access, and then I think we've got a democracy-access problem right here in the city. So DFL convention wasn't for me.
What do you, when you say that it's hard, do you mean because you have to raise so much money?
That is a big part of it. The number was getting, I think you said this, maybe Emily Kosky said the same thing, Councilmember Kosky in my Ward 11. I think in her farewell speech, she might have said, "A council race is now costing fifty or seventy-five thousand dollars." I think, I think you may have said that, too.
Well, I think it can cost way more than that.
If you wanted to.
Depending on how, you know.
Even a ward race? Even a single council ward race?
Oh, I think Ward Eight, the last time the two combined candidates spent half a million dollars, you know, and that's, doesn't count in like PAC money and stuff like that.
Okay, yeah, we'll get, so, and the mayor race costs a million, so this is problematic. So I did come in late, just for personal reasons. And another reason was I, so it's, it's an odd race in that it's an open seat, but with a perceived frontrunner, clear leader. And I wasn't, I just didn't agree, and I'm speaking about Jameson Whiting, who's, you know, running a strong campaign, but I just, I just didn't agree with him on, on platform. I, I think the city really needs to streamline, or refine, or pull back a little bit, and his platform was, I mean, his, his basic statement was, he wants to fight for every child, parent, and citizen, yeah, every child, parent, and citizen will have somebody to fight for them. Okay, it's a, it's a, it tugs, it's a message, tugs at the heartstrings, but I thought it was gonna snap the purse strings. I mean, where, where is the limit of that? What do you even mean by that? I mean, I know it's a positive thing. He's got a, he's got a lived experience where he felt if he could have gone on track, but parents and mentors and coaches surrounded him and kept him on. Okay, I mean, that's great. I really, it's hard to argue. He's a good campaigner. It's, it's hard to run in an open seat, because there's really just not enough to traction, right? But I just have thought, boy, I, he and I just disagree on the way forward for the overall strength of the, of the city.
And so, I mean, certainly getting into a race, because you feel like you have better platform, is kind of right what people do, right? But so what's your background? We, we kind of skipped over it. You mentioned freelance writing. I think you wrote about music for a while. How, what are sort of some of those, what's on the resume? What makes you qualified for the, for the job here?
Right, I did have a fun first career. Radio, I, I had different abilities in radio. I didn't proceed in that. Nobody really warned me that, how commercial it was, hey, you've gotta raise money, you've gotta raise money on a political campaign, too, but I mean, if you're gonna get paid, you've gotta sell commercials, you've gotta speak to this, and I just didn't feel quite that artif, that artificial, or that I could just play that role. So I dropped out of radio, but I ended up in, in print, which is funny, because I didn't feel like a confident writer in high school or even early college. But a local commentator around town, David Brower, valuable guy, was a good mentor for me at my college paper, and taught me how to write a stronger lead and, and a good body and a finish. And when I became a confident newspaper writer, I became a better college paper writer, and school was fun after that point. I lucked into a first career as an entertainment reporter around town following the clubs, and I had a blast when the West Bank, when, God, Five Corners Saloon, and the Four Hundred Bar, and the Triangle, and the Coffee House Extempore, and.
All those ones that aren't there anymore?
Yeah, yeah, I've been replaced by, and Palmer's, Palmer's wasn't quite the music spot that it was, that it became. So that's changed a lot, the city has changed a lot. Actually, music clubs are coming back, there's another new one all the time, so it's like, maybe I should get back into the clubbing game. And that's great to see. I never root against the city, even though I'm pessimistic or I'm concerned, I never root against any, any growth or any uptake in the city. So Uptown does look like it's gonna, could be fun again with the Granada Theater, yeah, New Jazz Club right next to the Isles, Isles Bun downtown. That, that small Berlin jazz club is really a treat. The Dakota doesn't actually book too much jazz anymore, but that's fine, nice room. So yeah, I mean, we need fun things to do, I'm glad people feel like that. So I, I did the, I did the music writing thing, and I made it all the way to Best Buy Corporation, I was lucky there. But I retrained as an LPN, as a nurse for long-term care, and that was really life-changing for me. It was a, it was a one-eighty from the glamorous fun life of, and the objectives, or subjective life of just being a music, an opinionated music writer and reviewer. Nursing is pretty much factual, you know, what are the vital statistics and what are you going to respond on, or tell the doctor to order on? But it was great to be in something more giving, a little more warm-hearted, a different side of me, that was great. I loved the work, and I got busy in, I was valued as a union steward. With my writing and speaking background or confidence, I could look the administration in the eye and defend immigrant, mostly immigrant HSTs, or you know, CNAs, or nurses, or dietary. And I was quite good at that, and as a matter of fact, I got a couple of guys, not me alone, but I, my testimony to a field hearing that was chaired by Aaron, Senator Aaron Murphy, led to some high-level, they, they were either firings, or they were rapid resignations, you can call it what you want. But that was in twenty-twenty-three, and there are tapes of my testimony, there's a recording of my testimony on my website, jimmyerminneapolismin.com. So for the last three years.
Now, is that your campaign website?
That's also my campaign website, but how is somewhere deep in there is that, is that archive. Ever since then, I feel like I've been a marked man at my site. I have not been trusted by the administration, I've been harassed pretty bad.
Same by the union?
By the administration.
Oh, okay, all right.
That, just ring me in for questioning about this and about that, and it really reached a peak recently. I was defending a, a nurse, a young nurse who was terminated for a fatal error, but I thought the error was symptomatic of a lot of system breakdown and lack of care.
So you, so you have this background as kind of a union steward?
Yes.
And.
Fighter, you know, official, and somebody willing to speak truth to power, as they say.
So it's a union town, and you decided to make the move towards city council?
Yes.
So what, what are the top three platform planks you're, you're running on?
Yeah, I, at first I developed a web, a yard sign, and I changed the design, particularly after the news came out about Jeremiah Ellison, Councilmember Ellison, living mostly in Boston or studying in Boston, but still having his Minneapolis job. So on there, I put three planks to make it very clear, lower taxes, better core service, and honest governance. Now, even within those, you can say like, well, what do you really mean? I did want to speak, I just didn't feel many candidates or our elected leaders were looking out for budgetary restraint, so I put that right. Now, one, one person can't, you know, one vote, you can't just magically lower taxes, but I wanted to make a statement that I'm trying to be a, some guardian, yeah, some guardian of, of our tax money. I really think sometimes, some of these younger council people feel like it's, it's their money, not our, not ours, you know, like, it's theirs to spend as they wish, and there's just been a lack of respect of where that money comes from.
Yeah.
So the lower taxes, it's, it's hitting, I didn't really campaign on, on senior, I'm on the advisory of the Minneapolis Advisory Committee for Aging, and long ago I was on the Racial Equity Advisory in twenty-eighteen. That's when I got a look at the city. I got a look behind the curtain in twenty-eighteen, and I was surprised that I didn't think the city was very tightly or professionally managed. I thought it was kind of a madhouse, I thought the youngsters had sort of taken over and were really rapidly changing the direction, way beyond the understanding of the general population. And I've, I've kind of felt that for a long time, like, the general citizenry is lost. Some of, in door knocking, some of them still don't even understand ranked choice voting, let alone all these different action plans, the transportation action plan, the climate equity action plan.
I think we do, we have made government pretty complicated.
Yes.
So I mean, I, you know, I mean, people have lives, and they're following government, city government, and.
And I feel like I'm passionate about it, and even I can't keep up. So how in the world is somebody with a kid or two, or some elder care, or two or three jobs going to possibly keep it? So no, I think, so that's getting to a point of my third point, like, honest governance. We, I think we could do a much better job of, like, slowing down the pace of work at the City Hall and making sure we're kind of, as much as possible onboard. Now, the argument could be made, like, hey, you know what, that's democracy, get with it, or, you know, if you don't care, you don't care. But it's like, ah, boy, I think we've gone quite, we've really gone high-speed for the, in the progressive era, there's just been a philosophy of like, yeah, no, no, bigger and better government is good for everybody, and let's keep doing more of it, and it's like, boy, I think there's, I think there's a difference of opinion out there in the real world. I don't mean to be that demeaning, everybody's got a real world, but, so I think it's leading to a distrust in government and a real dissatisfaction. I mean, I don't think anybody's happy about this mayor race. I mean, I don't think, a lot of people just really don't, A, either know who they are, or like the candidates, and a lot of people, I even drove by a sign, I drove, on my way here, I drove by a Jacob Frye sign. Somebody had personalized it, it's like, yeah, I don't really love him either, but I don't like the other guy. Yeah, I, I hear that on the doors a lot, so. So the second thing was better core service, and that mostly gets down to crime and safety. People are still bothered about it. Ward 11 is interesting, I feel like it's a ward of two wards, and possibly three. The Washburn Water Tower, you know, Tangle Town, Diamond Lakeside is really much the sphere of influence, the power center, and I know that from living there, believe me. And I know the vote turnout is in that center. If you go the other side of the lake, very different.
You mean the highway?
No, I mean across Lake Nacomas.
Oh, okay.
Well, yeah, across Cedar and across Lake Nacomas.
Okay.
Ward 11's actually a pretty shallow ward, but a very wide one from, you know, Kowalski's on Lyndale, practically over to the light rail. A different, a different attitude over there, more conservative on that east side, a little more working class or whatever, possibly even a Republican holdout. It's very near where Dennis Schulstedt was, a council member in Ward Twelve for about twenty years. And so, and there's a little more rental over there, there's, there's more apartments, and I, from door knocking, I sensed that there's a lot of rental homes than there are in the nice sort of enunciation side of, of Ward 11.
What do you, what do you make of the sort of divide, I guess, or the emphasis that the city council in a lot of the campaigns right now are putting on, like, renter and renter protections? Do they got the mix right, or are there things you would do differently? I mean, they seem to be really pushing this divide of.
Yes.
Renters are being, you know, rent stabilization and, or controls in the, in the works if, say, Fatah gets elected. Where do you stand on issues like that?
Well, rent control, in its classic sense, has just been proven statistically. I'm, I'm not like a deep analyst of it, but I just, the, the stats seem so clear that it depresses development. And actually, it's, if I'm not mistaken, the stats about our multi-housing development have fallen off quite dramatically, and they certainly did in St. Paul, and I don't know what's holding up Minneapolis. So I haven't really heard all of the specifics about a stabilization or changing the thing. I'm a little concerned that it's just the same thing repackaged. And, but I, I would think that there, there would be some way that we can, I, I do think there ought to be some protection about just blatant gouging and uprooting people with an eviction, or, you know, canceling their lease quite dramatically and strongly is, it is a, it's a huge pain. The cost of, you know, moving again, finding another place, so I, I'm not altogether against like abusive protection, but I would really have to see the specifics about it.
Yeah, I mean, some of that stuff, and I, I feel like some of those protections are already in place. This is just kind of, so like, if it's fifteen-day notice for eviction, now it's thirty, stuff like that. I guess the real question is, is this an issue for your ward, like, that you're campaigning on, or?
I don't think it's too, I don't think it's too big out there. It's not, it's not a large renter ward, and, and I think, I do sense that the establishments we do have closer to Thirty-Fourth Avenue are pretty well-managed. I think it gets down to that, too. Is there, is there good onsite management? I think that can change, I think that can help a lot of issues. But I mean, yeah, if, if some place isn't being kept up, and it's completely running down, and it's like a, a physical danger, then I hope we're doing enforcement and regulation about, about that core.
So you talked about core services, and of course, that being policing. I mean, I know Ward 11's one of the safest wards in the entire city, but where, what does that mean to you when you say, you know, protecting or enhancing public safety? What does that mean?
Getting back to the point about the two wards within the ward, or even a third, Boston Terrace is like such a sort of a different world of high concentration of Somali rent there at the, at the very edge of the ward, right along the crosstown. People closer to the rail are more concerned about the break-ins, about the car jackings, or just the burglary and robbery and physical assault that way. Maybe not so much, again, near Washburn or Tangle Town. So, yeah, I, I had sensed that people over there just really feel abandoned since the precinct moved. It's not even on Lake Street anymore, and it's not even open at the new site that's scheduled for, is it even for next year, or the year after? Did you just write about this lately?
Yeah, I just wrote about it. I, I wish they would give some more updates on what's happening. I think I saw that there's an RFP out there for the other services that are going to be in the community center, or.
Safety Center.
Safety Center. But I haven't seen an updated, like, timeline. I guess the last I heard was sometime at the, in the first half of twenty-twenty-six, but I have very little faith that that's gonna happen, because I don't think there's been any movement. But lots of stuff could be going on in the background I don't know about, so, but yeah.
I have gotten a sense from knocking that people over there just feel like they just do not have the patrols and the safety and the assurance. One time I was walking, I was walking on a street, and the night before, a bunch of cars had been, I don't know what this, this really unfortunate trend of just smashing cars, smashing grabs on these cars, but I saw a window, like, an auto glass repair truck, and I was like, I wonder if they're in on it, like, I wonder, you know? But, so.
So what does that mean for your campaign, then? Are you for raising the number of police, lowering them? Are you for, you know, some of the alternative methods that are being promoted, like neighborhood safety and stuff? Like, what's, what's the mix of things that you tell people?
I think we just do need more patrol, I just think we do need more, more police patrolling streets, rolling up and down, visible, at, at least. And it may be too early to judge the alternatives, but I've said this in print, that I've just wondered if this, this attraction to this big ecosystem of public safety, I mean, I just want to know, bottom line, are we reducing crime? Or are, here's a thing I've, I've noticed about Minneapolis that concerns me, like, it seems prone to finding the most elaborate solution.
Yeah.
And program, they love to program, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Departmentalize and, and program things as broadly, there's, just has not been restraint on getting right to the problem. And so I have, and my message has been, I wanna know, are we, are we stopping crime? And I, and I use the term crime more than safety, because safety's just too broad.
Right. Well, it doesn't necessarily include, like, the smashing of the windows, and, you know, the, the home, home invasions and stuff like that.
We, you know, the, the people actually voted down the development of an Office of Community Safety, as I recall. I mean, I thought question two failed, and then we got the office anyway. It just seemed like, I, I don't, I don't align with Councilmember Robin Wonsley very often, but I think we did on this, where she just thought it was kind of another protective layer, or another obscurity of, of accountability, and.
What are you referring to exactly?
The establishment, I think she was opposed, now, she might have been for an Office of Community Safety at the vote, and then opposed when it was Jacob's idea to do it over, kind of over the, the will of the public. And the whole office, the whole creation of that Office of Community Safety. I kind of was, was fearful, too, of maybe, you know, it's just, again, one more stop in the process.
And so people under, understand, what the Office of Community Safety covers is nine-one-one, the police, fire, emergency services.
And a Department of Neighborhood Safety that Amanda Harrington leads. So she reports up to this.
And I think the idea they minded is that, is that ecosystem idea, right? That it's, the police aren't just off on their own, they're part of this whole bigger group. But, you know, I don't, I don't wanna go off on a tangent, but that's, that's what that idea is, right? What about, so budget was in your first line. What, what's your plan for lowering taxes, increasing economic development in the city? What are the, the ideas that you have for that?
I feel like the city developed new departments in the last ten years, and it's, it may be time to evaluate if they were, if they're this modern, and they were not really absolutely essential, somebody may have to make a tough call. But it, but I, I actually went to, I went to a meeting just last night, and I'm glad he hosted it. It was, it's, it's Elliot Payne, President, Council President Elliot Payne.
Yeah.
Hosted a. Hosted a. Public meeting to try to illuminate the budget process and three people from finance department were there and it's, it was. It was even a better presentation. You can see a very basic presentation of like the budget process online. The council president would really like this process to be, he's actually trying to bring a transparency to the whole process. Because I think he's a little, I think he's a little worried in this strong mayor system, so much power can reside in one place. He's trying to. Shine some light on there and I applaud that. I don't, you know.
Well, I'll ask him about it. I'm interviewing him on Thursday.
Do, do, and I think a meeting is coming to the ward next week. I mean, can I say the twenty ninth or. Tuesday at Pearl Park, the Ward eleven version of that, and I'm probably going to go to that again because last night was very interesting and. And the city's doing some, if you, if this is your passion or you've got the time, the budget and the finance committee. The finance department is putting a lot of data online to try to inform residents about whatever property values. Or department status, the FTEs in departments, et cetera, that I, I welcome that completely. But one thing that has been a popular trick that I think. May not work. It's politically expedient. I don't know if it's efficient, is orders to cut across the board a little bit. And bring us under control. You could eliminate an apartment. And solve all of that little nickel and diming, but it, but in a union city, that is not going to be. Easy to do. So I'm, I'm a little worried that the city's kind of like hamstrung of like, well, we're, we're this big because we're this big. And it's going to be harder to get smaller because until there's a crisis and then, and they've had these in twenty twelve when a, when a Republican governor took over and. So. Yeah, I. Like I said, I, I, the city's going to have to find. Revenue or, 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 you know, efficiencies and, and. The question is getting asked more seriously, do we have interagency inefficiencies going on? And if we can find those, I mean, if we, if we can find them, why didn't we find them before, you know? But now we really need to find who's doing what. And you've had, you know, Mark Andrew on who had an understanding of what the county's role is and what a city's role is in comparison. And now it is more crucial than ever that we just get this clarity. If a problem is insurmountable, why is it? Where's the gap? Who's doing it? Boy, a, a book project right now would be a list of all of the non-government agencies. What have they, some evaluation of what have they done? Where is the overlap in that? On various scores in the environmental space, in, in the housing space and this and that. How much money is going into administration of administration? So, you know, I do want, I do want our worst chronic problems solved for the betterment of humanity. I'm not that heartless, but. I don't know. So I tried to be an independent outsider. I didn't, I will admit, I didn't come with all of the. Intellectual power of where the levers are and where the answers are or whatever, but I was mostly trying to start a conversation that, hey, the people want. The people want some clarity and some effort and some efficiency about this.
Yeah, and it seems like, you know, there's, there's very few candidates out there where this is their number one sort of approach, right? Like, hey, let's look at the budget. Let's reevaluate whether all of these departments are necessary. Is the city the right size or does it need to come be smaller? So I, you know, those are all completely valid topics. It seems like they, they just. They take a backseat to some of the other more hot button issues.
Layoffs seem like a third rail of city politics and I, I, I get it. But I just don't want the default to be, oh, that would be painful. Here's your higher taxes. Well, that's painful on this level too, so. Just.
Well, good. I, I appreciate you coming in and explaining all that to me. Is there? Any other message that you'd like to convey before we close things out here?
People have flattered that it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a race. I'm, I'm very flattered because I, I don't know if I deserve the. I don't know if I deserve the acclaim because I come at this pretty green, but there's a couple of good candidates. Within this three person race. I was an early supporter of Miriam DeMello. She comes with a lot of. She has more government experience than all of us. Also a trained lawyer. Daughter of immigrants. She's got a world perspective, but she doesn't, doesn't agree with putting world politics and even national issues into our locals. She is like me. She is trying to get back to basics, good quality service, budgetary restraint and, you know, fiscal responsibility. So. People may find it weird. I, I jumped into the race, but I was, she's really, she's really concerned on public safety. And we share that and I just really. I went independent and wanted to just let kind of, like I said. Less engaged citizens know that there was somebody out there and, and again, for the east side of the ward that I thought was. Overlooked, you know, because you know where the turnout is. So then the attention goes to the turnout. And the turnout's better because they got the attention and therefore it's the turnout. So the next map around, they go, well, this is where the turnout is. And so it's, it's, you know. Self fulfilling kind of a loop. And so I, I worked very hard on the east. Jameson Whiting really played up his Washburn connections. I went there too. He coaches there. And it's like, there's another, there's another proud school in the ward, Roosevelt. So I just want, going forward, I want some fairness for, for all of the ward and I'm not saying the winner wouldn't, but really. I'm not on night shift. I actually left my LPN job for reasons. I'm going to have more time. I took quite a leap into the campaign and kind of a leap into a whole new world of whatever's next for me. I'm not even sure. I'm taking, you know, job recommendations, actually, if anybody listening has an idea. But I just, this might actually be the start of my more civic engagement. I know it's very backward. You should do your groundwork. You should raise your profile and then go into the race with that strength. I just kind of challenge myself to get in. I think you can be taken more seriously. Even as a, you know, low budget, latecomer, independent, if you're in the race and you've dedicated. If you want to talk issues, people will talk with you more than, and not that some people haven't been generous, but I think people. Therefore might say, hey, he seems like he really is concerned. And I, I have been flattered about one thing. People have, whether I get the votes or not. People have been complimentary that I've even done it. It's just not for everybody. It takes a.
Takes a lot of work.
It takes a lot of work. It takes just the nerve of it and I have the nerve and not many people do, and even some people who do it don't. And I was not doing it with any power structure and I learned the hard lesson just this week. I was outdoor knocking and then I saw. Mailers by all of Minneapolis PAC with Jacob Frye on one side and. Jameson Whiting on the other side, and I don't know what the decision was about that. At first I thought, man, that was really using Jacob Frye's power to, to boost Jameson Whiting. It could have actually been the other way around. I think this mayor race is going to be close and we will see what happens. I just, I, another thing is. I was, I was worried, not only did I kind of disagree with Jameson's basic principle, but I. A lot of people are just unsure exactly what kind of candidate he is and I, I really did have fear. I've, I have not liked the super majority council. That could override the mayor. People may disagree. No, it's been good, but. I was just fearful that if a really bad decision came along. Jameson might be tempted to be a ninth vote in support. So I, I, I went in there to work to try to guarantee a balanced council this time around. And we'll see, we'll see if it works or we'll see if I've underestimated him or if I can pull this off, but. So it has, it really has been a learning experience and I don't know if I will again, but I will. I've learned from, learned from doing it.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, getting in there, going door to door, listening to all your neighbors and what they have to say. I mean, that's only, you learn so much by doing that.
Right, but I've learned, I have also learned. Unless you've got a lot of like web skill yourself or a lot of communication, tech skill, and I want to develop mine, but. I, it's really hard to do it alone, to go it alone. So if you need these promises and you need these partners, like people even told me like, well, if you're, if you're thinking about it. I think you should talk to so and so and you should talk to so and so and. I felt like, why, you know? Do I need somebody's permission to get in and try to be a voice of the people or? I mean, I realize it might have been a reasonable strategic thing to do, but I just like, I didn't like this feeling. That I, I wasn't allowed and I, and Jameson took such an early lead. I felt like somebody was trying to. Stop the conversation about, about the ward early on and I kind of just rebelled against that too. So. It might be weird motivations, but I, I just really wanted to stir the conversation and, and see where it takes us.
Well, great.
Well, thanks for, speaking of that, thanks for having me on and all you're doing about Better Minneapolis. I don't know if people know I've been an early paid subscriber. I didn't expect any special favor from Better Minneapolis, but I just think you're, I think you're doing valuable work like I'm trying to do on my level.
How can people find out more about you? What's your website?
It is WWW Jim Meyer Minneapolis Min dot com. There's a funny story about that. Early on, I was hooked up with a, a tech support, they're not a party, but they call themselves a tech support. Group for independent candidates. They have three, they're called goodparty.org and they have three principles. You have to run as an independent. You have to take like less than half of your money from big corps or, or special interests or PACs. And that was no problem because I've got one hundred percent individual donors. And in your way, fight corruption or battling against corruption. Well, that was pretty much the whole point of my thing. So I could make those three. I started a website with them called electjimmyer.com, but when I filed. I had almost forgotten that I had a dormant site, jimmyerminneapolismin.com. That was going to be a healthcare and labor discussion forum, but it never took off. But when I filed, because my name was in the filing and my name was in the URL, I was getting hits from Russia. So I had to quickly, this was a, this was a setback for my campaign. I had to abandon the idea to kind of experiment and learn what good party could do. For a pure independent because I would like more candidates to feel like they've got, they can fight the power, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And we kind of need that and I, I don't want campaign managers to lose their job, but. We, there is. Out in, out in the community, there's, there's expertise, but these people just don't really put it forward until you. Stumble on somebody at a coffee or maybe like at the, at the Niclet Bridge, at the Tangle Town Bridge presentation about the change. A couple of engineers were really laying it down to people on staff about how to do this, whatever, tensile strength, this and that, blah, blah, blah. It's like. We need to get this, we need to get this common expertise out into our political discussion, but it's just, it's so, it seems so limited. So I was kind of interested in that. I had to abandon because I just had to run a more conventional campaign out of Jim Meyer Minneapolis Min dot com. Out of a Wix site development and W I X dot com platform. So.
Well, thanks for letting us know.
Yes.
And we've got to call it a day and close the door here because they're throwing us out here in a minute, so.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.